Good morning. Good morning and welcome to our, uh, today is Monday, October 7th, 2024. We are gathered for a work session to get a semi-annual update from our regional housing authorities. My name is John Kofalas, Commissioner from District One, joined by my colleague Jody Shadak McNally from District Three, and Commissioner Stevens, Kristen is not here at the moment. We also are joined by our Assistant County Manager, Acting County Manager Lori Cadrich, and across the way we have a variety of good folks from the various housing authorities that do good works in our, in our county. At this time, Lori, did you want to queue anything up before we turn it over, I think, to Aleah?
No, Commissioner, I think we could just turn it over to Aleah.
Okay, welcome, Aleah.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name's Aleah Rodriguez, I'm the Housing Stability Manager.
Appreciate the reminder, everyone, you hit the button to turn your mic on. So I'll introduce myself again. My name's Aleah Rodriguez and I'm the Housing Stability Program Manager with Larimer County. And I'll be kicking us off today. Next, please.
I'm Caitlin Lovett. I'm the Business Ops Coordinator for the Human and Economic Health Services area. I'm just running the slideshow.
And once again, just a reminder, please, to project a little bit, let's talk into the mic so I can hear you. Thank you. So before we get started, I do just like to kind of ground any housing conversation we're having at the county around our housing strategy statement. This states our top needs in our area along with the county's role in addressing these top needs. Today's session aligns with our role as a regional coordinator, and we'll also talk about some of, one of the programs we'll talk about today, Larimer County funds to help expand housing resources in our area as well. So it kind of hits on two pieces that we focus in on, on our, our housing strategy here at the county. So this session is held twice a year, it's semi-annual. It was, as a reminder, this session was created as a way for Housing Catalysts to stay in compliance with our contract that we have with them as they perform duties as our Larimer County Housing Authority. And then it was also expanded so that the board could hear updates and learn from all three of our housing authorities that serve throughout Larimer County. Our first work session this year was on May 6th, and it was very development-focused, new units. So today's session is going to be less development-focused. We're going to hear from SS Park Housing Authority and their progress towards working on workforce housing. Loveland Housing Authority's section is going to be presented by, Jeff was unable to join us, so we're going to focus mostly in on resident services that Loveland Housing Authority offers through their partner nonprofit, Aspire. And then Housing Catalysts is going to report on our Larimer County vouchers, along with work that they do in permanent supportive housing and other priorities that they're working on. We're going to have each presenter go for about 15 minutes. I'm going to try using a timer this time to keep us on time. So presenters, if you do hear a little ding, that means you've got about two minutes to to wrap up, and then we'll move on to the next, and that should leave about 15 minutes at the end for our commissioners to have comments or questions. Okay, so we'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to pass it over to Scott Moulton, Executive Director of SS Park Housing Authority. Take it away.
Thank you, Aleah, appreciate the introduction. Oh, good morning, everyone. Aleah said we're going to focus on programming and not so much development, but I am going to kick off this morning by talking about development to a degree. As you all know, we had two significant tools provided to the Estes Valley residents in the last two years, one of those being the short-term, excuse me, 60, or the lodging tax extension, and then, of course, the linkage fee on short-term rentals. I'm going to touch on that here in a little bit, but we got right to work once we initiated and signed the MOU with the town of SS Park for the lodging tax extension. So in 2023, we've, what year are we in? It's 2024. Some of these things started in '23, so that's why I wanted to roll the clock back, apparently. In '24, we've been quite busy implementing and using those funds to set us up both with short-term solutions and set us up for the future. So with that, we acquired a few parcels, 775 Riverside, 2.72 acres. We acquired what we term Zero Mary's Lake Road, 11.35 acres. Both of those are in unincorporated Larimer County. The Riverside property, we will begin the annexation process into the town within the coming probably 60 days, as we're in pre-development concept work for that site. Zero Mary's Lake Road will not be annexable, and that is in the county. We also acquired an existing 16-unit multifamily complex that was as much of a preservation play as it was anything else, given the new units that we need for our community. We need to also be mindful to not lose what we already have, and that's why that acquisition became important for us. And then, I'm going to hold off on that for a minute. We are closing this Friday, so the 11th, on another existing 20-unit multifamily complex that is currently being used in the, as a lodging property. So it's 20 units, there's a life estate on that property, so operationally, we only gained control of 19 units until that, until we gain control of the life estate at some point in the future. So that will be focused on 80% AMI or below for the local workforce. It's a beautiful property, very well-maintained, built around 2006. We'll be holding an open house, I'm aiming for the first or second week of November. You all will receive an invite, hopefully you can make it up to walk through that property as we want to show it off. And then, of course, the, the big one, which we've been working on for quite some time, is we were successfully able to close last Tuesday on the acquisition of Fall River Village. That is 90 units, much like Beaverbrook, it is being used currently as short-term rentals in the lodging market. So there's 90 units, it does come with an event center as well. That was a significant lift that's putting it lightly to get that deal to come together in the short time that we had to bring it together. We've received a preliminary award from Oedda and Chaffa for a $7 million equity investment into that as part of that acquisition, even at the purchase price of $35 million, which is about $388,000 a door, and with all the financial contributions won from the prop, the equity investment or anticipated equity investment from Oedda and Chaffa, along with, we utilized the short-term rental linkage fee in Estes for $1.48 million as a down payment. We also used the lodging tax extension to the tune of about $900,000 on the upfront equity side, but between the remaining portion of 2024, now that I know what year we're in, looking forward into 2025, we have about another $1.8 million allocated to that property to help support debt payments and any reserve requirements that we need. We anticipate that we won't need all that $1.8 million, but this deal would not have been possible without the security provided by those two sources of funding, and of course, the direct cash contributions that they were both able to provide. Next, Aleah wanted me to touch on our progress on Fish Hatchery, which you all dedicated $2 million in ARPA funds to the town. We are gathered for a work session to get a semi-annual update from our regional housing authorities. My name is John Kofalas, Commissioner from District One, joined by my colleague Jody Shattuck McNally from District Three, and Commissioner Stevens, Kristen is not here at the moment. We also are joined by our Assistant County Manager, Acting County Manager Lori Cadrich, and across the way, we have a variety of good folks from the various housing authorities that do good works in our county. At this time, Lori, did you want to cue anything up before we turn it over, I think, to Aleah?
No, Commissioner, I think we could just turn it over to Aleah.
Okay. Welcome, Aleah.
Thank you, Commissioner. My name's Aleah Rodriguez, I'm the Housing Stability Manager.
Aleah, I'm sorry, I think you're going to call us off.
Appreciate the reminder. Everyone, you hit the button to turn your mic on. So I'll introduce myself again. My name's Aleah Rodriguez, and I'm the Housing Stability Program Manager with Larimer County. And I'll be kicking us off today. Next slide, please.
I'm Caitlin Lovett. I'm the Business Ops Coordinator for the Human and Economic Health Services area. I'm just running the slideshow.
And once again, just a reminder, please, to project a little bit. Let's talk into the mic so I can hear you.
Thank you. So before we get started, I do just like to kind of ground any housing conversation we're having at the county around our Housing Strategy Statement. This states our top needs in our area, along with the county's role in addressing these top needs. Today's session aligns with our role as a regional coordinator, and we'll also talk about some of, one of the programs we'll talk about today, Larimer County funds to help expand housing resources in our area as well. So it kind of hits on two pieces that we focus in on, on our housing strategy here at the county. So this session is held twice a year, it's semi-annual. It was, as a reminder, this session was created as a way for Housing Catalysts to stay in compliance with our contract that we have with them as they perform duties as our Larimer County Housing Authority. And then it was also expanded so that the Board could hear updates and learn from all three of our housing authorities that serve throughout Larimer County. Our first work session this year was on May 6th, and it was very development-focused, new units. So today's session is going to be less development-focused. We're going to hear from SS Park Housing Authority and their progress towards working on workforce housing. Loveland Housing Authority's section is going to be presented by, Jeff was unable to join us, so we're going to focus mostly in on resident services that Loveland Housing Authority offers through their partner nonprofit, Aspire. And then Housing Catalysts is going to report on our Larimer County vouchers, along with work that they do in permanent supportive housing and other priorities that they're working on. We're going to have each presenter go for about 15 minutes. I'm going to try using a timer this time to keep us on time. So presenters, if you do hear a little ding, that means you've got about two minutes to wrap up, and then we'll move on to the next. And that should leave about 15 minutes at the end for our commissioners to have comments or questions. Okay. So we'll go ahead and get started. I'm going to pass it over to Scott Moulton, Executive Director of SS Park Housing Authority. Take it away.
Thank you, Aleah. Appreciate the introduction. Oh, good morning, everyone. Aleah said we're going to focus on programming and not so much development, but I am going to kick off this morning by talking about development to a degree. As you all know, we had two significant tools provided to the Estes Valley residents in the last two years, one of those being the short-term, excuse me, 6E, or the lodging tax extension, and then, of course, the linkage fee on short-term rentals. I'm going to touch on that here in a little bit. But we got right to work once we initiated and signed the MOU with the town of Estes Park for the lodging tax extension. So in 2023, we've, what year are we in? It's 2024. Some of these things started in '23, so that's why I wanted to roll the clock back, apparently. In '24, we've been quite busy implementing and using those funds to set us up both with short-term solutions and set us up for the future. So with that, we acquired a few parcels, 775 Riverside, 2.72 acres. We acquired what we term Zero Mary's Lake Road, 11.35 acres. Both of those are in unincorporated Larimer County. The Riverside property, we will begin the annexation process into the town within the coming probably 60 days, as we're in pre-development concept work for that site. Zero Mary's Lake Road will not be annexable, and that is in the county. We also acquired an existing 16-unit multifamily complex that was as much of a preservation play as it was anything else. Given the new units that we need for our community, we need to also be mindful to not lose what we already have, and that's why that acquisition became important for us. And then, I'm going to hold off on that for a minute. We are closing this Friday, so the 11th, on another existing 20-unit multifamily complex that is currently being used as a lodging property. So it's 20 units. There's a life estate on that property, so operationally, we only gain control of 19 units until that, until we gain control of the life estate at some point in the future. So that will be focused on 80% AMI or below for the local workforce. It's a beautiful property, very well-maintained, built around 2006. We'll be holding an open house, I'm aiming for the first or second week of November. You all will receive an invite. Hopefully, you can make it up to walk through that property as we want to show it off. And then, of course, the big one, which we've been working on for quite some time, is we were successfully able to close last Tuesday on the acquisition of Fall River Village. That is 90 units, much like Beaverbrook. It is being used currently as short-term rentals in the lodging market. So it's 90 units, it does come with an event center as well. That was a significant lift, that's putting it lightly, to get that deal to come together in the short time that we had to bring it together. We've received a preliminary award from Oedda and CHAFA for a $7 million equity investment into that, as part of that acquisition. Even at the purchase price of $35 million, which is about $388,000 a door, and with all the financial contributions won from the equity investment, or anticipated equity investment from Oedda and CHAFA, along with, we utilized the short-term rental linkage fee in Estes for $1.48 million as a down payment. We also used the lodging tax extension to the tune of about $900,000 on the upfront equity side. But between the remaining portion of 2024, now that I know what year we're in, looking forward into 2025, we have about another $1.8 million allocated to that property to help support debt payments and any reserve requirements that we need. We anticipate that we won't need all that $1.8 million, but this deal would not have been possible without the security provided by those two sources of funding, and of course, the direct cash contributions that they were both able to provide. Next, Aleah wanted me to touch on our progress on Fish Hattery, which you all dedicated $2 million in ARPA funds to the town. Then we have now stepped into a development role for the Fish Hattery site and have assigned MOU with the town to use those funds to get us started on what is really the third iteration. So we've selected a design and entitlement firm, Palona Architects, and that firm with a few other partners in there. We're making significant and rather quick progress. It is, of course, as anything in Estes goes, or development in general. It's a challenging site, so we're learning quite a bit. We have wetlands due to the old Fish Hattery. There's, of course, slope involved on that site. We're making really good progress on sort of all those limitations so that we can come up with adequate designs focused on workforce and affordable housing. So we fully anticipate that a portion of that future development will involve low-income housing tax credits as well. So I hope to be able to provide more info in the coming months on our progress there. And then switching briefly to the, Aleah, how am I doing on time?
You got six minutes.
Oh, good. I'm not doing too bad. Switching to sort of the programmatic side, the lodging tax extension, or 6E as we refer to it, really gave us broad scope and really a broad directive to not only focus on development or preservation, but also focus on what programs could we stand up and implement to help our workforce specifically. So rather quickly, we implemented a workforce rental assistance program, and that provides up to $4,800 annually or $400 monthly to those who qualify, and it's focused on members of the workforce or families that are 60% AMI or higher, meaning I can't provide them assistance in any of our other developments directly, but we can via this program. I think we've doled out nine awards. We allocated enough funding during this sort of pilot period for about 15, but with enough flexibility there that should the demand be greater than we anticipated it, we could move some funds around and allocate more funding if we needed to. We are also in the early stages, I think we'll be presenting an initial draft of a new enhanced down payment assistance program to the EPA Board in a couple of weeks, on the 16th, I believe, is our next board meeting, where we'll begin in earnest conversations about what an enhanced down payment assistance program can look like. And I'll just highlight two potential parameters of that, understanding that this is very early on, and we haven't had the conversation with our Board yet. But we'll be focusing most likely on a shared equity-style program, which allows the program itself to share in any future equity gains from awardees of the down payment assistance. And then we're also trying to make it meaty enough, substantial enough, that those who need that assistance in our community can be competitive or more competitive on the open market. So we're looking to 10 to up to 20% of assistance in that program, whereas the current program only goes to about 3.5% or $15,000. We're looking at something much more substantial to help that equation move into homeownership in a rather expensive environment. That is all I have, because I want to make sure you don't go over and leave enough time for questions.
Thank you, Scott.
Thank you.
Okay. Next slide.
Aleah, were you, earlier you had said at the very end we'll ask questions, although it appears it, Commissioner Shattuck McNally?
So we should ask at the very end of all the presentations?
Yeah.
Okay.
So we just have a lot of content to get through. If you wouldn't mind maybe writing down your questions and comments?
I'm going to do that right now, because I have several, so.
Then we'll have more time at the end for those.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now we'll move on to Loveland Housing Authority, and I'll introduce Paul Christiansen, the Director of Aspire. Take it away, Paul.
Hi, my name is Paul Christiansen. I'm the Executive Director of the Aspire Program. We're the nonprofit service partner of the Housing Authority. I've been with Aspire for about a year now, and previous to that, I was at Turning Point Center for Youth and Family Development for 26 years. So just a little background, you probably all know the Housing Authority manages about 1,000 units across 13 properties in the Loveland area and even into Windsor. But really, the Housing Authority thought housing wasn't enough, right? We had residents struggling. So in 2016, that's when Aspire was born. Because to truly thrive, people need support services, right? Financial services, childcare, jobs. They just need a broad spectrum. Of course, low-income people often have issues and their families have issues, right? And so pretty simply, our number-one task is to help all of our residents maintain housing. That's the biggest thing. Make sure they stay securely in their housing so they don't lose it. Number two, help improve their quality of life. And number three, in a perfect world, we will help improve their quality of life and move them along the spectrum, so hopefully, they can move into market rate and then open a space for someone behind them. We focus on three different areas. We focus on youth and families, older adults, and veteran services. We target certain communities out of those 13 that are higher needs and have different populations in them. The youth and family services, we have two, we have four resident service coordinators overall, and two of them are focused on youth and family services. Those are at Orchard Place, Brookstone, we do Summit the Meadows, and also The Edge, which is really our largest complex. Through that, we do parent education and support. That's our program called Parent Cafe, and that's along with Matthew's House. They actually run that for us at two of our communities.
Is someone advancing the slides?
Yeah, you gotta let Caitlin know.
Yep, sorry about that. Next slide, please. Thank you, Commissioner. So like I said, the parenting, education, and support, you'll hear me talk about, a lot about community resources, connections, and referrals. We're small, right? We can't necessarily provide all of the services, but our resident service coordinators, it's really their job to understand everything and available in the communities to make referrals for the services that our residents need. We do a lot of food instability. Really, this came up during COVID, as everybody knows, that was a big thing. So we work with the food bank, and multiple properties, we actually do onsite food banks. We work with the food bank there, deliver our food, and then we run pantries on the sites. We also work with Kids Pack. Kids Pack has been a fantastic partner in Loveland. It's for, probably everyone's familiar with Kids Pack, but they give us food for kids so they have dinner when their school is not happening, so they have food. So weekends, holidays, and through the summer, Kids Pack does an awesome job of keeping our youth and families fed. We do financial literacy programs. A big thing we do is eviction prevention, really. The Housing Authority, resident managers and coordinators will make referrals. Anytime there's a resident that's struggling, they will make a referral to Aspire and talk about that and let the resident know, and we will reach out and help them with whatever it is. Sometimes when we say eviction prevention, sometimes it's not just rent, right? The other day, we had someone whose car broke down, right? Single mother of three kids, car breaks down, the park costs $500. And at that point, do you buy food? Do you pay rent, or do you get the car fixed? So we have certain pockets of crisis funding that we have, and we were able to help them fix the car, again, which means they can pay rent, continue to get to work, and get the kids to school. Youth leadership and education programs, we focus on those. Really, you know, the kids, they're the future, right? And if, whatever services we can do to help keep the kids in school and graduating, that will really affect their future. So we work with Thompson School District a lot to help us provide services to do that. The NAPI Project, we actually disseminate over 2,000 diapers through the NAPI Project to our youth and family in every month. So I'll move on to older adult services. Okay, thank you. Almost 300 units of older adult-specific, those are at Mirasol and Silverleaf Properties in Loveland. There, we provide pro-social recreation leisure activities, health and wellness. A big thing is healthcare navigation. Every year, we bring in specialists to help people with their Medicare and Medicaid updates to make sure their insurance is good. We just had a vaccination clinic. We do tax help every year to do that. Fraud prevention has become a big thing, a lot of older adults, people targeting them for fraud, so we do that. And then tech services, right? More and more things are online, a lot of our older residents struggle with that. We actually paired with the Thompson Library District. They have actually tech navigators who come in, and so they come once a week and they help with our residents do anything that they need, on their computer, their phone, help them fill out e-forms, things like that. So that's been pretty successful. We work with the families. I mean, really, our overall goal here is to help our older adults age in place, right? We want to provide the services and connect them to services to keep them living independently as long as we possibly can. We do a lot of holiday celebrations, events. Really, we want to make it like a community, right, at both. Bring everyone together. One of the big things we do is we have residents who can, they're still able-bodied, they're able, they want to help others. So we do Volunteers of America, and they become Volunteers Through Volunteers of America, and then they help other residents in their community, so. Maybe we want to move on to veteran services? Next slide, please. Okay. So the veteran services really started at The Edge. We have 10 units of permanent supportive housing at The Edge, that's our vet building. Those are through VA vouchers, are called VASH vouchers, that the residents are in there. These are fairly high-need individuals. The referrals come through the Northern Colorado Continuum of Care. These are previous homeless veterans that move in, and we have Resident Service Coordinator Jerry Eckelberger, who is onsite, and she helps them with their broad spectrum of needs. And those include really helping connect with the VA. She's the conduit between that program and the Veterans Administration, so she helps either way. She helps the VA connect with the residents, and the residents connect with the VA. A lot of fellowship activities, try to connect to other veterans groups. We get support from the McKee Wellness Foundation for this program, and there's another program called Healing Warriors Program that our residents were trying to use. They provide therapies, physical therapies, and non-traditional therapies to help veterans and their families. It was very hard for our residents to come to Fort Collins, that's where they're based. So we paired with them, and now at The Edge, they come once a month and provide services for all residents, for all veterans in the Loveland area, so that's been successful. Again, we have a food pantry there, too, and crisis funds are a big thing with the veterans. We helped someone buy an electric bike the other day because they couldn't get to their appointments, whether it's bills, food, someone who's in school, we helped them with a laptop the other day, really a broad spectrum of services. So that's really the three focus areas. I do want to point out that that might be our focus, but we are there to support any resident of the Loveland Housing Authority. And that's over the 1,000 units, that's probably 2,500-plus different residents, so. And if they're not in one of our target property, again, that was Mirasol and Silverleaf for the overadults, Brookstone, The Edge, and Orchard Place for youth and families. The rest of them are, again, referrals. And so if there's an older adult, we have specialties within our resident service coordinators, so we target veterans who live across the properties, we target older adults who live across the different properties, and youth and families. And then the referral comes, we will have the correct resident service coordinator take them so they have the expertise. Aleah, how am I doing on time? I've got one minute.
Yeah, I'm in like two minutes.
Okay. Well, I've done the, I talked a lot about the community partners and referrals, if we can move to, yep, we did that. There's just a, it's not an exhaustive list that I had, but again, we really rely on our partners. Funding for Aspire, the Loveland Housing Authority provides 65% of our funding, and I really want to say how amazing I think that is. We exist because they fund this program, and Aspire couldn't exist without the Housing Authority. Then outside of funding from the Housing Authority, grants are a very big area. We received a grant this year from the Loveland Human Services Commission, $35,000 split between youth and family programs and older adult programs, so that's great. CHAFA grant, Tony Grams' youth grant, to help us with our youth and families. And then we rely, of course, on business donors, community members and individuals, and then we do fundraising events. So continually, we have to raise a third of the funds, so we are always looking to find more grants, partner with more agencies, and look for more funding for Aspire so we can continue for a long time. So, thank you.
Thank you, Paul. The second section for Loveland Housing Authority was going to be on the Larimer Home Improvement Program. This program is run by Linda Wright. She's the Real Estate Project Manager at Loveland Housing Authority. Unfortunately, she had an emergency this morning and is unable to attend, so I'm going to do my best to do some high-level overview of Larimer Home Improvement Program. You do have the brochure in your handouts as well, and you can reach out after if you have further questions. I do sit on the selection board for this home improvement program as a representative of Larimer County, so I do get to see the profound impact that it has on homeowners throughout the county. This is a program that can be accessed by any homeowner, low-income homeowner, throughout Larimer County, and they serve in these three ways. One is they offer low-interest, 0% to 2% interest loans for home improvement, that can be single-family home, town home, or condo. They also offer manufactured home or mobile home improvement loans as well, that are usually 0% to 2% interest for repairs. And then the third thing that the program offers is emergency grants, which are not repaid. They're up to $5,000, and those are for very low-income homeowners, I believe, below 50% of the area median income. And those, the emergency grants are typically used for failed water heaters, burst pipes, or dangerous electrical situations, things like that. So here's the 2024 impact. You can see here, 21 grants have been distributed, 11 loans have been completed, and there's currently 10 loans in progress that will likely close by the end of the year. So a big impact, helping a lot of different homeowners. You can see down at the bottom of those totals, at the top, 10 of those homeowners live in the city of Fort Collins, four live in the city of Loveland, and the remainder, the majority, live outside of our two major cities. And the reason that the program's able to really serve the areas outside of City of Fort Collins and City of Loveland is due to Larimer County's contribution to this program annually. And then, obviously, City of Fort Collins, I believe City of Loveland as well, both contribute to this program as well, and that's how they're able to serve within the city limits as well. Let's see, could go to the last slide, and then this is just a happy client photo. So you can see there, they were able to get new siding and new windows in their home, which, you know, most of the repairs, the grants and the loans are for safety repairs that need to be done in the home, not necessarily cosmetic. And as we know, you know, windows are very important. We need to keep our homes warm and protected from the outside, so. I'll wrap up there, and we'll go to our last presenter. So we'll have Housing Catalyst step in and introduce Rachel, I don't want to butcher your last name, the Communications Manager with Housing Catalyst.
Thank you. Good morning. I'm Rachel Geeseford, and I'm the Communications Manager for Housing Catalyst. I have some highlights of our recent work to share, and I will be counting on our CEO Julie Bruin to jump in and add context and nuance as I go. Next slide, please. We wanted to give you some updated Larimer County voucher data. These numbers probably still look familiar. We have 104 housing choice vouchers that Housing Catalyst administers on behalf of Larimer County Housing Authority. This includes 39 regular housing choice vouchers and 65 mainstream vouchers. And as a reminder, those mainstream vouchers assist people who are 18 to 61 years old and have a disability. We included some demographic information. There's also more details of that in the handout that we gave to you, but we just wanted you to know a little bit more about the people that those vouchers serve. We also included a map on the right that shows the location- We also included a map on the right that shows the locations of all of the vouchers that Housing Catalyst administers. So you can see that they're used throughout Larimer County, Fort Collins, Loveland, and also areas outside of those two cities. Next slide, please. We wanted to provide an update on our Moving to Work status. As you might remember, we were selected to join HUD's Moving to Work Demonstration Program in 2022, specifically in the landlord engagement cohorts. MTW is a HUD demonstration program that allows local housing authorities to, some flexibility to come up with innovative solutions so they can use federal dollars more effectively, increase housing choice for residents, and also support self-sufficiency. It took us a little bit of time to get all of the backend systems up and running, but we are now giving out leasing bonuses and damage claims to our landlords to try to encourage more landlords to become Housing Choice voucher landlords. We also have some waivers that we're using. The MTW program does not come with additional funding. So the waivers are one of the ways they allow us to try to reduce some administrative expenses so that we might have more budget to put into that program. We've been in communication a lot with the Larimer County Office of Housing Stability and their Landlord Engagement Program, trying to make sure that our incentives align so that we're not confusing potential landlords with those different programs. Next slide, please.
See, she didn't agree.
Be here for questions. On the permanent supportive housing side, I think all of our commissioners have had the opportunity to tour at least one of our permanent supportive housing communities. We have Redtail Ponds and Mason Place that both have 60 apartments. We've had 248 residents live in our permanent supportive housing communities since 2015. And just to give you context for these residents, the majority of residents have two or more disabilities, report a chronic health condition, and have experienced chronic homelessness. When we were discussing this presentation, we were talking to our Chief Strategy and Operations Officer, Michelle Christensen. And she said the biggest takeaway is that the, we're seeing increasing acuity in our permanent supportive housing residents. And we are not necessarily seeing funding to keep up with the supportive services to support that. Some examples are, we did not get our Larimer County Behavioral Health Grant renewed for this year that supported onsite services for those permanent supportive housing communities. And we also had our FUSE funding end in 2023, which is Frequent User System Engagement Fund vouchers that is for people who have had regular contact with the justice system who are now moving out. Is there anything you want to add to that one, Julie? Okay. Next slide, please. We also wanted to talk a little bit about our advocacy and engagement efforts. I think they sometimes fly under the radar, but we're always working to educate and advocate for affordable housing in our community. In our strategic plan, we refer to this as building community support for affordable housing. This slide highlights some of our 2024 outreach and touchpoints. Julie Bruin joined an MTW roundtable with HUD Secretary Adrienne Todman in Boulder earlier this year. We had staff and commissioners attend the NARA Washington Conference in March. You can see them in that bottom-right photo at Senator Michael Bennett's office. We also had representation at the Fort Collins Community Housing Summit. And I'll just mention, the big one that we've done this year was the Colorado Competitive Council came to tour Oak 140. Representative Andrew Basenekar included us as a part of his base camp to bring legislators and business leaders from across the state here to see an example of affordable housing and the partnerships that went into it in our community. So this was a really great opportunity for them to see the building and also learn about issues like affordable housing finance, the land use code, and the role of housing authorities in solving the affordable housing problems in our country or, and in our county. We also just have a lot of local, state, and national organizations that we're involved with on an ongoing basis. This is a sampling that I'm showing here, but there are about 30 different organizations that our leadership team is involved with, advocating for affordable housing, learning about affordable housing, and trying to advocate for our communities' needs.
Oh, I want to interject.
Yeah.
Julie Bruin, CEO of Housing Catalyst. NARA is the National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, and I've had the honor of serving on the board and leadership positions for almost quite a while. On November 2nd, I have the opportunity to go to the World Urban Forum in Cairo, Egypt, which is the United Nations' large conference on community development, sustainability, and implementation of the UN Sustainable Development Goals. I'll be taking 12 of my peers with me, and we'll be meeting with HUD staff and other officials. We're really excited. So maybe we can talk about that when I get back.
Next slide, please. And finally, just to end with some good news. At our recent National Association of Housing and Redevelopment Officials, that NARA conference happened a couple of weeks ago now. But we were honored with five NARA Awards of Merits. Oak 140 received two, one for project design and one for affordable housing. And those other nominations received either Administrative Innovation or Resident and Client Service Awards. Our Positive Credit Reporting will move on to be considered for a NARA Award of Excellence. They're looking for programs that can be duplicated in other communities. And that's been a really successful program that started as a CHAFA pilot. Also, Julie Bruin was inducted as a NARA Fellow. The NARA Fellowship Program is a way to honor people who have shown sustained commitment to affordable housing in their communities, and then allows NARA to tap into their wisdom and experience in order to mentor the next generation of emerging leaders. And I believe Julie is the first NARA Fellow from the Mountain Plains region. So we've been lacking in that, and we are very excited to have her as a part of that program.
I think that's it. Thank you so much. Now, the rest of the time, we've got more than 15 minutes, can be spent with your comments and questions.
Thank you, Aliyah. Thank you, colleagues. Commissioner Shadak McNally, you want to begin the conversation?
Yes, I would, thank you. And I'll kind of work my way backwards, since we'll start with just the recent ones' comments. But congratulations, Julie. It's very, very exciting. Congratulations on becoming a Fellow and congratulations on heading to Cairo, Egypt. It sounds very exciting, and I'm sure there's always something to learn and share. And I really appreciate your representation. I'll look forward to hearing more about that. And please keep us in the loop because we're always looking for ways to, we can keep doing this better. We're doing great work. We're all doing great work. You're all doing great work. But we can always keep, we still have a lot to work, a lot to accomplish. So I wanted to go back to the Behavioral Health Grant that you didn't receive. Are there other sources of funding for any kind of behavioral health supports? Or is it, were you relying only on that funding?
Is that the Medicaid?
That was the covering for Tasha's position, Julie Larimer County Behavioral Health Grant.
Okay, so part of that grant was to develop our ability to be a Medicaid biller. So eventually, over time, we would have had another source to pair with that grant. That's why it feels like a pretty big loss for us.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you for that. And then the next question I have, and this might be for all of you, so just know there's going to be a common theme. We know that our, our older adults are going to be up to most 29% of our population. That needs growing, and, you know, the costs, the costs are going up. And I see that 31% of the folks in the resident demographics are aged 60 or older. Is there a partnership, a focus? What is the strategy for addressing older adults who are needing this housing maybe more than, they have maybe even less resources than others? I have an example of, and I'm sure Scott will probably know there's someone that was, been struggling keeping housed up in the Estes Valley area and was actually living at one of our campgrounds, who was an older adult. And so I'm just curious about what are, what we, what we're doing kind of in partnership to help with older adults.
Yeah, I think one thing you might want to dig into a little bit is the Partnership for Age-Friendly Communities. Housing Catalyst has a member on that board, and they're really working on, I forget the terminology, but it's really universal design. The Village on Eastbrook property that we have tax credit application in Fort right now and received Prop 123 land bank funds, will be using that, that kind of universal design approach so we can serve families or seniors with those low-barrier entryways and all of the physical kinds of things that create universal housing for all. So that, that might be one, one good example.
So that would be, that's a grading symbol. So that would lead to that intergenerational kind of, Generations United kind of approach? I'm sure you've heard of Generations United. So I'm a big fan of that. So great. Okay, great. That's wonderful. And then I don't know if we can get these sent to us electronically. A lot of the language on those things that are printed out to me are in some language I don't recognize. I don't know if you saw that.
It came out as gibberish.
Gibberish. So if we can get, most of the slides are in gibberish, so.
It was, yes, it's electronic.
No, no criticism. It's just that I was watching up there, but I don't have it on here, and I would love to have those numbers, those again. So, so thank you for that, and I appreciate that. I appreciate the data, but it'd be great to have that. And then can, so lots of other questions, but I'm really proud of our partnership and thank you for all that you're doing. And I do agree that Mason Place and Oak 140 is a great program. One other question. There's been some mobile, mobile-integrated healthcare units traveling around to try to bring some healthcare, primary healthcare or just frequent utilizers. Do you see an opportunity to expand that or use that more with, on top of what you're already doing inside of the, of your unit, of your projects?
Oh, I'll have to talk to my staff and get back to you. I know that they really focus at the two permanent supportive housing properties, and they may be partnering at some of the family developments. I'll check.
I would be just curious. Thank you. All right, so if I might, Mr. Chair, I'll try to be very quick because I know you have questions as well. So Loveland Housing Authority, I'm very familiar with Kids Park and with, Aspire actually came to some of their events when you opened kind of that childcare center on the northern part of Loveland. It was a long time ago, like five, six years ago. And I know you've got some, I think the kite flying is kind of a fundraiser.
The Kite Festival, that was one and a half weeks ago.
Yeah, that's kind of a fundraiser for you all.
That's our largest fundraiser.
Yeah, that's a wonderful event, and so thank you for that. I think that's wonderful. Can we, can you share, maybe, Aliyah, what is our contribution as a county to that? Because I really, I'm really thrilled to hear that we're doing some of this work all up and down, especially outside some of the bigger cities. Curious about that. Or maybe you know either one?
So the county doesn't contribute to Aspire, but we contribute to the Larimer Home Improvement Program, $75,000 a year.
Seventy-five?
$75,000.
And does that help older adults, too, or is it to anyone?
It's any lower-income homeowner in the county. I can get demographics around how it naturally serves older adults.
That would be great. And then also, I know a little help, sometimes helps with some of those yard maintenance and stuff for folks, trying to help them, you know, keep up so they don't, you know, have issues with that. Is that also part of this, or would this be a separate, kind of doing the, cleaning out the gutters and helping kind of with, you know, trimming the trees or, you know, things like that? Would that be more of a little help, or is this part of this kind of program?
That's more of a little help. The, the home improvement program is for larger repairs. So maybe you need a new roof, you need new siding, you need new windows. So you're hiring contractors to come in and do professional work rather than using volunteers.
So a lot of these homeowners don't have insurance? So like that they need a new roof because of hail damage or something? Or is this just long, like, older roofs and not from, like, hail damage or things like that?
It depends. But also, even if, when you have insurance, it's a sizable amount you have to come up with on your own.
Okay. That's really helpful. Thank you. And then Scott. And thank you. I really, I think Aspire is a wonderful program, so I just wanted to, and we're big supporters of kids back. For, I've been volunteering for them for like 12 years.
Yeah, you, you spoke at the grand opening.
Yeah, oh, that's right. Thank you for reminding me. I thought, gosh, he looks so familiar.
If I may speak to just one thing real quickly. Julie mentioned the building of house, generational housing, right? Housing that works for the whole family, including older adults. I think that's a great point. I really think that that's the future to do that. But I'll stand up for services, really, and this is really across the board. It isn't just older adults, right? High-needs individuals, older adults at-risk families, they need services, right? And I think that's always going to be. And I think, my parents are in their 80s, they live in a community, and people don't know where to go, right? You get out of the hospital, you have an event. Where's home healthcare? How do we do that? And so I still think on, on any model, yes, the housing, but always to keep it in your thoughts that services need to come because these, these people really need, need help across the board. So I just want to advocate for, for all of our agencies. You were talking about permanent supportive housing. Higher acuity, we see that, too. I think all levels of care, we see a higher acuity, right? What they were targeted for may not be the people who are coming in. These are so, anyway, it's just a plug for across-the-board. Supportive services, I think, are really a key part.
Kind of a navigator, kind of?
Yeah, navigation services, right? I mean, Mason and Redtail, hopefully I speak okay with this on you, but they need the case managers and the staff on board to be able to maintain and connect the staff as they need to. If not, things can kind of spy, spiral out. I mean, I saw that happen with residential treatment with youth. It's, services are really important, and I hope the commitment to continuing to provide those professional services to really help keep residents on track and in their housing.
Thank you for that. Mr. Chair, I just want to add, that helps kind of, remind me, I had another question for you. When I served on the Loveland Human Services Commission for over four years, we, I think there was, when you opened The Edge, and now there's Edge 2, I remember. But those, those positions, those units are kind of permanently available only for, for veterans at one of those Edge pages, like, there's specific.
Correct. Edge 1 has the 10 units of PHS, it's its own building.
And then there was, I think, the, the Human Services Commission funded that wraparound service coordinator for the first three years, I believe it was. So now you're saying the, the funding's coming from, 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 it's helped from Healing Waters, but is there funding from other, I think you mentioned that, I was hoping you could, where's that funding?
Yeah, I can, I can expand to that. Really, most of our Veteran Services is coming from the contribution from the Housing Authority. McKee Wellness gives us a block every year, and we really use that for crisis services to help keep our friends. But we, currently, our Loveland Human Service Commission grants are for our older adult services and our youth and families. So outside of McKee, there isn't, except for Loveland Housing Authority, there is not another conduit for Veteran Services.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. And Scott? Hello, how are you? I was up in Estes. I'm good. I was up in Estes last night for a while. So decided to do a speed hike about, out of breath the whole time because it was, like, getting dark. But I had a couple of questions. Really excited about the work. I looked up those property addresses, so some pretty strategic locations, very excited about that. I'm curious about, like, the Grand Lake or the Fall River Village. Those are like hotels or apartments or whatever, I don't know. But is there money? So this is to buy the property. How much money is needed to maybe renovate, to make them more? Do you have to go in and renovate anything of these, or is this just, they're ready to go?
They're ready to go, for the most part. We're just looking at what you would normally look at to turn a rental unit. So general cleaning, potentially some carpet replacement or cleaning, but that's about all the units need. Both Beaverbrook and Fall River Village are unique in that because they're currently operating as lodging, they're also fully furnished. So we have, I don't, we don't know what the need will be for, for that specific solution, but we have said, we're going to provide a few options for families moving in and members of the workforce who can leverage and potentially use that furniture or not. But they're basically turnkey for all intents and purposes.
That's exciting. So they have, like, little mini kitchens or something?
They're full residential units. There's nothing mini about them.
That's great. Oh, that's fantastic to learn. And then can you tell me about Zero, Zero Mary's Lake Road? I was trying to look that up. Of course, that's not popping up. So where's that at?
No, it wouldn't pop up. That'd be hard to find. No, it wouldn't pop up, that'd be hard to find. It's, so kind of across from Upper Broadview, I know you're somewhat familiar with the area.
Oh, I know, yeah, Upper Broadview is a very infamous road.
There it is. And so there's a little pond, half of that pond is on our property, and there's one home next to it, and the property that I described as Zero Mary's Lake is kind of a horseshoe around that single-family residence.
Oh, okay. And what are we looking to put there? Is it apartments, or do you, I mean, what's, what's the plan for that?
So only very high-level conceptual ideas as part of the due diligence to purchase it. Currently, it's owned for two units per acre. Our vision for the site, as it stands now, of course, understanding this is very preliminary, would be, hopefully, to be able to provide some single-family homeownership opportunity with a couple strategic areas in that eleven-point-three-five acres where we could go a little bit more dense than the current zoning, but not looking to go maximum density nor an apartment complex. That's not how we envisioned that site as we, as we purchased it.
You know why I'm asking?
I do.
Because it's in the county, or unincorporated county, excuse me, everything is in the county. If you want to remind everybody that.
Good point.
But the infrastructure there is with that density, and so what, obviously, you're not looking to annex that, because that's not contiguous, so I know, I know this very well. So what, what are your thinking? What are your plans?
All necessary utilities to put whatever density we would plan to put on that parcel are available.
Are you talking with our community development department on what is, because there's different zoning in that area, so that would take a lot of work, so I'm just, that's why I'm asking, so just curious, so, okay.
So from a utility aspect, it, the site, best as we know it now, could hold whatever density we desired and what we thought was the best fit. So there are no practical limitations to that site, but we did not, the Housing Authority did not purchase that site with the idea of coming in or close to maximizing the density at all, but would we like to potentially increase it from the current two units per acre? Yes.
Okay, that's helpful. Any of this, how, any of these units in partnership with the park, since they lost some of their workforce housing due to fires, and that's going to be a long time coming, so I'm curious, are you partnering with the school districts, with the National Park Service, the hospital? Are these open to any of these individuals, or is this a different, from the service industry mostly, from, there's a lot of need up there.
There is. The short answer is no direct partnerships at this time, but we maintain constant communication with both the National Park, the hospital district, all of the service providers in our community on ways we could partner. We don't have any currently, but we're all staying engaged. They know what we have in our pipeline, and the option is always available to them to partner directly or master lease, if that's the proper solution for them. So again, no direct partnerships at this time, but we're always open to it.
Great, I appreciate it. Thanks for answering my questions. You knew that was coming, because I'm very curious about what your, that property, so thank you very much.
Welcome.
That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
If Commissioner McNally, if you would allow me to piggyback and ask my esteemed colleague a question. First, when he showed those capital stacks, I just wanted to stand up and cheer, because that is complicated financing. When you talk about workforce housing, Scott, you talked about workforce housing and affordable housing. So in some communities, workforce housing means the actual employers are contributing, and in some places, that refers to an area meeting income band. I twitch a little, because all of the people in our affordable housing are working, and at some point, we decided that we had two different terms, one almost implies worthiness and one implies subsidy. So with your permission, I would ask my peer to explain his definitions of workforce unaffordable.
I am really glad you brought that up, actually. I think it's a, it's a key definition and distinction, or lack of a distinction. I think the reason we talk about workforce housing in Estes so much, and that is a highlight and a focus, is it's defined in our development code as a single member of a household eighteen years of age or older, working somewhere in the school district boundaries. But I constantly must remind both our elected officials and our community as a whole that income-qualified housing, or low-income housing, as we refer to it oftentimes, is the exact same as workforce housing, and that our stats, seventy-six percent of our households in our income-qualified apartments that we operate have a member of the local workforce or business owners as part of that household. So they are one in the same, and I think the reason we focus on the definition in Estes is it's simply that defined definition in the development code. But I think it is important, to your point, that there is an overlap, it is all one in the same, and it's, it is just how and where we focus on specific income bands, generally speaking, on any potential new development or project that we are looking to start.
And, and thank you, Julie. I agree with you both. I think it is, to me, to me, it's everyone, right? And the reason I bring up only with Estes Park is because we did have the lodging tax as well, the childcare and lodge, and workforce lodging tax. So that's why I kind of use that term a little differently up there, because that's kind of been the, the focus is those terms. But you're right, they're, they're really, not to even say that any, a lot of these folks are all working, are working in, in, in their capacity, so I feel like that's a great distinction, and I agree with you. But, but yeah, I know that's in the development code, that's why I kind of use a different kind of.
Right, resort communities are unique and have their own unique challenges, for sure.
Thank you.
Well, given that there's only about four minutes left, I think I just want to say thank you to all of you for your hard work and collaboration. I did have various questions, not necessarily burning questions, but perhaps if time allows, I could maybe follow up with you, Aleah. I just appreciation for all the good work, and I appreciate the opportunity to serve as a liaison of sorts with Housing Catalyst. Lot of advancements since the eighties, when I was on the board back then. So, thank you all very much, unless there's anything else. Aleah, anything else? Then at eleven fifty-six AM, we're adjourned.
Thank you all.